Good evening, welcome to the September 1st Board of Selectment's meeting. If you'd please stand and join us in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, and this meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown on local access cable. First on the agenda, we have ratification of two firefighters, Kyle Maderos and Kevin Pitcher. Chief, would you like to introduce them?
Sure. This is Kyle Maderos, firefighter paramedic, resides in Rainham, Massachusetts. And this is firefighter EMT Kevin Pitcher, resides in Bridgewater, Massachusetts.
Great to meet you guys. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No, great to meet you guys. Hope I don't need your services anytime soon.
Nice to meet you.
So is there a motion to ratify their employment?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations, guys.
Great, thank you.
Welcome to West Bridgewater. You are officially employed now.
And that's all. You guys are welcome to head out.
Okay.
If you want, you can-
You can stay for the entire meeting if you really want to.
You're waiting for your dad?
Ah, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what they have.
It's your timeframe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll do, we'll take-
Okay, yeah, whatever.
Sounds good. Thanks, chief.
Have a good night.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wish you the best.
Oh, well, thanks. Have a good night, guys.
Here's Adam.
We have an application for a one-day liquor license and one-day entertainment license for the Lions Club, Sunday, September 12th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve those and waive fees?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, for the meeting minutes of May 19th and June 2nd.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And except for review of the meeting minutes of May 14th and June 16th.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have awarding a contract for the building department. This is to scan and digitalize historical documents. The lowest quote was Morgan, which was 22,000 compared to 24,000 and 34,000.
Yep, and I would ask the board, we are actually, Mike White did a nice job on this, working hand in hand with Linda, but Mike did a nice job. He got the multiple quotes. We are going to pay for this out of a state grant, which is the leftover money from the online permitting. The excess surplus funds is 20,000. So I will ask the board to award it to Morgan in the amount of 20,000, because that's what we have for availability of funds. I will note that because scanning does require a lot of time and there's no guarantee as to what will happen at the very end, is that if they can actually do all the files for the 20,000, they have said that they will, but they'll have to see how fast they do it. But in the end, we can't spend more than 20 grand.
We could if we wanted to pay for it out of his budget, right?
That is correct. You could. We'd have to then probably do a transfer, because he doesn't have surplus anywhere else, but you're entirely right.
Alright, so is there a motion to award it to Morgan?
So moved.
Do we have to specify whether it's limited at 20 or whether we will pay for it out of his budget?
Yes.
I'd like to see it all get done. It sounds like that the vendor will do the best they can to stick to 20, but if, for some reason, it goes over by a small amount?
Yeah, their quote is 22,000 and change. They just said that, you know, if it goes faster and they can do it all for the 20, they will, but most likely they can't. So if you want to award it for the full amount, then we'll get it all done for the 22,000 and change. Just know that sooner or later, the building department will be a couple of thousand dollars short at the end of the year. We'll have to do a transfer.
So my suggestion would be to have a not-to-exceed amount of the 22 for whatever it was, and then leave it at Mike's discretion if he wants to take that difference from his budget or not.
You mean limit it to 20 and have, leave it up to Mike for the 2297?
Correct. So the contract would be not to exceed-
20.
Their vote would be not to exceed, and then it would be up to Mike if he wanted to utilize the other 2,300 from his budget or not.
So your vote then would be to not to exceed 22,297. That way, if you want to take the 2297 out of his budget, he could. If he did take it out of his budget, so he got it all done, then we just have to know that at the end of the year, we may have to do a transfer.
I'm okay with that.
Are you, you're saying in addition to that $2,300, or you're saying it's just the 2297?
Yeah, just the 2297 out of his budget.
Okay.
The 20,000 will come from the grant.
Okay.
Alright, so I'd make a motion that we would approve 22,297, 20,000 to come from the grant, 2,297 to come from Mike's budget.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Site plan review for self-storage at 359 and 401 Pleasant Street. It looks like they are, they're asking for a modification to the special permit to demo existing buildings. Didn't seem like they were adding, is that correct?
Yeah, they're demoing one building and adding three. So there'll be a net two.
They already, do they already have the special permit to add, though, right?
They do. They have the special permit for the number that they have. That's why they have to amend it to increase it beyond what they currently have.
Okay, because they had recently expanded.
They did.
So they're expanding again.
Yeah, I think I counted it was either 19 or 21 buildings. So they got demo one and add three.
Okay, I don't have any comments. Does anyone else have comments to send to the planning board?
No.
Nope, so is there a motion to send it to the planning board with recommendation to approve? Or is there just nothing?
I'll make them-
Well, I guess, I'm trying to figure out where it is and what sort of recommendations we would make. And then also, how do we make sure they hear our recommendation?
So have, have there been any complaints about this business?
To my knowledge, no, but again, to my knowledge-
Very secluded location. I mean, it's a quiet business. I have absolutely no concern about it.
To maintain the aesthetic, that it remain looking secluded, that they don't suddenly take down everything and it be this big wide-open storage facility?
How much does the footprint change? When they-
So, um, they're doing two things. One is, is that they're actually eliminating some of their paving, because it's my understanding that by eliminating some of their paving, they are going to have more impervious, and more pervious soil. And that that's something the conservation would like them to do. And that they're taking down an older, small building and replacing it with three newer ones. So it appears to me that the overall footprint will actually be smaller, but the square footage available for storage space will be greater.
Okay.
That's exactly what I see, too. Yeah, I honestly, I don't have any comments.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we want to make a motion to recommend to the planning board or just?
To recommend.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, site plan review for Grand Slam at 269 North Main Street. They are adding an outdoor dining area.
Now, that takes away from their parking, right?
Yeah, the planning board will have to make sure they comply still and all that, I mean.
I know in the past, parking had been an issue. I know across, at a, the place across the street, sometimes used the parking.
Yeah, I know. Grand Slam has more parking than it needs and required by law. So they're okay on that. Right now, they have outdoor dining because of the liberties that have been provided under COVID-19 restrictions. So I've got to give them credit. They're doing a nice job saying, let's get ahead of whenever the COVID-19 restrictions are let up, and let's make this in perpetuity. So they'll get a special permit through the zoning board of appeals for it, and then they will come back before your board, because you will have to amend your license under an altercation, alteration of premise, because they serve alcohol out there.
And for entertainment.
They have entertainment out there, too?
I'm assuming they'll probably ask for a modification at some point. I don't know.
They told me that they would just serve alcohol, but they would keep their entertainment inside.
That's what it says right now, and, but, no, you would cross that bridge at that point.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the planning board.
Second?
Do we give any suggestions or anything?
I personally don't have any. I mean, if you-
Yeah, no, I guess I don't either, so second, yeah.
Yeah, we control the hours, so that's not an issue.
None of that's changing.
Considering where it's located, they have the parking.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Southeastern Regional Assessment Increase. So last week or so, the superintendent reached out and said that we needed to provide additional funding. This is because the Essar II funding, we originally anticipated would be allowed to cover the baseline budget, which that had changed from the governor's recommendation, and the legislature did not allow it. So we're responsible for an additional $32,000 in funding to the Southeastern Regional School District. We have the option of adding it to the tax roll, or we have the option of a FinCom transfer. My personal recommendation is adding it to the tax roll. I think it's too early in the year to be utilizing half of the FinCom reserve.
I'm fine with that. I'm good with it.
It's not that much of an increase when you consider the amount of money spread over the taxes. It's probably nickels and dimes.
And the budget's only going to increase next year from that number. Okay, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a resignation from the Council on Aging. The Supportive Care Coordinator, Susan Renaud, has resigned. Is there a motion to accept her resignation and send a letter of thanks?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Joan Shea has resigned from the ADA Committee. Same thing goes for that.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Glenn Turner has resigned from the Complete Streets Working Group. Is there a motion to accept his resignation with a letter of thanks?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There is a new union president at the school, so Jamie Pope would assume the role of Healthcare Insurance Advisory Committee. Is there a motion to approve that appointment?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob Ross is requesting vacation carryover. I believe it's, yep, five days, which is allowed under the union contract. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Comp time tracker policy? Honestly, I did not have a chance to read this. David, do you want to?
Yep, so basically, this is not defining what comp time is. As the personnel board, all I'm asking the board is to agree as to what the tracker policy would be. As we continuously try to entrench an HR department in town, it's important that we have some consistency in our policies throughout the entire town, not just over the department heads that the Board of Selectment oversee. So when I say the town, I'm referring to all town departments excluding the school. The school has, is a whole different, is a whole different department. So this would be for all town departments that are under you, plus this would be for library, water department, Board of Health, and the assessing department, since they are those separately elected boards. Again, this is not defining comp. All this is saying is, is that they will use one form. That one form will have consistency, because that's what we currently use on the department heads that answer to this board, and that they will provide that to the HR director four times a year or any other time that she requests it. That way, she will always have it on file. If there's any issues, questions, or problems, we can try to get ahead of it. But again, it's just so that way we can have some consistency. The chairman is correct, although it's only three sentences long. It's not a policy that I've had a chance to actually discuss with any of you. So if you want to take it into advisement, and we can vote on it next meeting, that way you can review it, or we can discuss in the meantime, that's fine. However, I will tell you, there's not much else I can say, except that it's just straightforward. This is how we're gonna, you're gonna just turn in the form, and we're gonna hold on to it.
Should a copy of that form be included with the policy?
It will be. Yeah, it says the attached Excel spreadsheet.
Can we review that with this? Should they be together?
So we could certainly give you that. You're, you'll be chair next year. So it's the same form that I've used for eight years, and as Denise and Anthony will tell you, at the end of my term, I always have them sign it as chair, and then I file it. So we're gonna ask everybody else to do the exact same thing. So I'll give you a copy. You haven't seen it yet, because you haven't been chair yet. But by all means, yeah, we'll give you a copy.
Okay, thanks.
And what happens if it's not turned in?
Well, so originally, we had on here talking about that there should be some type of progressive discipline if somebody doesn't follow the policy. We took that off, because again, we have separately elected boards, and, you know, then that gets a little bit tricky. So, you know, if the board, you are the personnel board. By mass general law, absent a personnel board, the Board of Selectment suffices the personnel board of the town. So if you want to add in there that there would be progressive discipline, and therefore, if they're not happy with the discipline, that the HR director determines that they can appeal it to you as the personnel board, that would be the appropriate action.
So I think there should be something stated in there that, you know, failure to provide it after two written requests, or whatever, you know, London policy you think's appropriate, that the presumption is you have no comp time. Something like that.
I don't know if you can legally do that.
Yeah, I, if somebody's worked the hours-
Yeah, they're entitled to it.
They're entitled to the compensation, whether it's comp time or payment.
If they're not telling you they have it, how, I mean, if they're not going to fill out a form saying this is the amount of time, because really, how are you tracking, how do you know someone worked these additional hours? Or worked during a vacation, or whatever, unless they're documenting it and telling you?
And it, well, it should have been approved. Right, comp time should be approved beforehand.
Okay, and then when they use it, it's not, there's nothing running through the time card? This would be the only record-keeping.
This is the only record-keeping. So, for example, my contract allows me for comp time, but it specifies what my comp time is. Comp time is meetings after hours excluding town meetings. So mine's clear, like, there's a policy. You know what it is. Unfortunately, some of these other boards have not defined what the definition of comp time is. And if we get into that, that's going to become a really difficult process to determine what it is. I have always taken the position that because I work 41 hours in a week, does not mean I get comp time. I'm a salaried employee. That's just a requirement of the job. But I can tell you other boards feel otherwise. They feel, hey, that's a 40-hour week. They work 41 hours. They get an extra hour. But that's not defined the contracts, and so that becomes a much stickier problem. Right now, to try to sidestep that thoniness, we're looking just to say, okay, turn in the form, provide the documentation. My guess is, over time, is that if it doesn't appear to be legitimate information that's placed on it, then we're gonna have to ask some questions. Hopefully, people will be honest about it. If you want to have some type of discipline, I think you would be better off saying progressive discipline would be, would, would take place at the discretion of the HR director, because that's who it's being submitted to. And again, like everything else, whether it's her, or me, or anybody else, is that ultimately, it's appealable to this board. So, you know, if you, if somebody doesn't turn it in because they're six hours late, and she fires them, well, kind of silly, right? But she asks 18 times, and they do nothing, and she writes them up, and they want to appeal it, I would certainly hope this board would laugh at them and say, you know, you shouldn't be sitting here. So I think some of this will just take a life of its own as we go through it. Our department heads are obviously really good. I'm not so sure if every other department head necessarily uses comp time. I'm positive of at least two. And so I'm, I think that it would be, it's prudent of us to at least have some basic tracker policy. And then from there, I guess we can make more sophisticated decisions if we need to. But we don't have all that information at our hands.
Alright, well, from start-
But if you want to put progressive discipline in there, then that's fine. If it's okay, what I would ask is, is that the board take it under advisement, and if you could direct the HR director to just add something in reference to that, we could send it out to each you, one of you individually, so that way you can comment on it, and we'll have it, try to have a finished polished product for you in two weeks. And in addition, we'll also attach the form.
Should we require everyone to fill this out, who is, who receives comp time, or who is eligible to receive it? That way-
That's what we're saying in this.
Like, every quarter, even if they don't have any, they send it in with zero?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we will table that until next meeting.
Thank you.
Mobile gas station, they are looking to remove the existing tanks and replace them, adding in a diesel tank.
I thought you meant mobile, as in it moves around? Took a second there. It's always ExxonMobil. When did it become mobile?
No idea. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions, comments?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the electrical aggregation contract. Dave and I talked Monday about this. He had it till Monday at 5:00 to sign. He signed, I believe, for the same rate that we're currently getting, 11,350. Is that right?
Correct. So just, our current rate is 11,326. The lowest rate came in at 11,500. Originally, the game plan was to bring this pricing to you tonight. Vote on it. We would go out to bid tomorrow, because you have to sign within two hours of bidding. It's considered a commodity, so it literally trades on the commodity exchange. But in talking to the chairman on Monday, we were concerned about a couple of things. One is, is that with the, with the impact of Hurricane Ida, we know that energy was only going to continue to go up this week. We had to bid it this week, because national grid is pricing next week. And once they set the market, that's what the bidding becomes. And they always bid out for six-month supply, because they go November to May. You will see in line one that the bidding that came in was all between 15 and 16 cents for six months. So Anthony's thought process and my thought process at the time was, and my consultant advised me, is that it is more than likely than not that you are going to see a national grid rate jump to that 15 to 16 cents from November to May, when they bid it out next week. Now, maybe it drops in a week, but that's highly unlikely. So with that said, we thought that it was prudent on our part to take the 11,500 that's available now, lock it in, and that way, people can save three to four cents, hopefully, per kilowatt, at least through the winter months. We would do a three-year contract, which is our- to be able to opt in, opt out during those three years. They have that flexibility. All they do is they just go onto the website, a call a 1-800 number. Literally takes about five seconds on the website. But it's an opportunity to save our residents money, and I thought, and so Anthony gave me the authority to sign it. I did. And so I would be asking you, it would be supplier two, which is Direct Energy, it's our current supplier, is that I would be asking the board to award a three-year electrical supply aggregation account to Direct Energy at the 11,350.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comment period. Does anyone have anything for public comment period?
I attended an Old Colony Planning meeting, and I thought it was interesting how they were talking about the accessibility of different people in different languages. And they were talking about the different signage, about how they were trying to go. It seems simple, but one of their examples was actually sign language, in that people don't learn to read English in the same way. And so that people of other countries, learning different languages, whatever, when they're reading all of these signs that have all this verbiage on it, a lot of it's getting missed. So I thought it was interesting how, as a strategy, they're trying to go more towards pictures. So I didn't know if that was something that we should consider.
In which way? Which type of signage?
Like, for example, there's a new children's playing sign that was put up near Pebbles Road. I believe she came before us, asked for a sign. Well, it's got, you know, go slow, children playing ahead. Whereas before, signs were simple, and it had a picture of kids playing, and you knew that's what was ahead. So that's sort of an example. It was just something that I thought was interesting and that I would bring back. That that was something they're trying to do as a strategy.
Alright. Anything else? I have one thing. Yesterday, we received a resignation, so it didn't make it onto the agenda. Colleen Maloney has resigned from the Southeastern School Committee. So just note that, I guess, and I guess we can send a letter of thanks as well. Town administrator's report.
Thank you. So just an FYI, the board, again, has been very good to everybody every single year, doing an employee appreciation day. You pay for it out of your own pocket. You set up this year to do an ice cream truck again. It will be Friday, October 1st. You can see that as the flyer that has been sent out to all town employees. Next on the list is incorporation of Perry's Auto Sales. They switched from Perry's Auto Sales LLC to Incorporated. They were unable to do business through the auction house, just because of switching over. There was no other changes, same officers. So the board came in, we want to be business-friendly. The board signed it. However, just to belt and suspend her, I placed it on the agenda, because I would just ask the board to take a vote, just authorizing the fact that you certified Perry's Auto Sales, Inc.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for the vote, and thank you, guys, for coming in to do that. Next on the agenda is Engineering Services, which is GPI. You may recall that we received a state grant. We did a sidewalk up on River Street, and we also added more pedestrian areas to walk as well on Ark Street. I think the sidewalk came out really nice. The Board of Selectment, one of your top priorities, has been adding sidewalks over a period of time. And it did cost us almost $300,000, all paid for from the grant. The one thing the grant does not pay for is construction administration services. And we use GPI, which is the firm that Jim Noyes works at. As always, he did an excellent job. For three months' worth of grant, for three months' worth of construction administration, he's only charging us $1,457, which is obviously a deal. But he knew that the grant was not going to pay for it. So as a result, the original grant that went to the state could not include it. So here is an amendment. I'm going to ask you to take a vote on it in a moment. I will say this, I think that it came out really nice. I do know and recognize that some of the configuration up there for parking is a little bit different. There's a little bit more parking on the road, and the parking now has gone to vertical versus horizontal. But, you know, we're all looking to try to do sidewalks, and there was only limited space. And so it was a balancing act that we did, and we did the best that we could to give more pedestrian area, more walking, more sidewalk, keep people safe as they walk from the center of town. We've talked about this before at this level. The eventual hope is that if we, as we get sidewalks up Lincoln Street, to eventually get them down South Elm and further down River, so you can actually walk from the center of town, make a whole loop all the way back down 106, back to the center of town. I think that would be awesome. And this was part of the thought process. So I do apologize. I know some people wish we didn't lose some of the parking, but it was a necessary evil. We kept the same number of parking spots. We just had to reconfigure them. But we did get sidewalks. So with that said, I would be looking for a vote from the board to amend the Engineering Services Amendment 1 for $1,457.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council on Aging, I've spoken to Marilyn. As always, she just does an excellent job. You could see that we are starting to bring in some more of our social programs that we used to have. We are still not at full capacity. We are still following social distancing guidelines, and we are still at about one-third to one-half of what we would have been for classes. But just as a, as a FYI to the board, I want to let you know that effective September 1st, we do have some of the old programming coming back into the town hall. We're also going to start some of the in-service lunches. You may recall when COVID started, that we transitioned to all lunches outside, and so some of the lunches will now be inside. Next on the agenda is your 9/11 memorial event. This is an invitation to all. We've already reached out to our state delegation. Thank you to Lorna for doing that, and thank you to the fire chief for putting this together. So services will be at 8:30 on Saturday morning at War Memorial Park. Lincoln Street Project, I have not discussed this at a meeting. I will tell you, it has taken up a copious amount of- I will tell you, it has taken up a copious amount of my time over the summer. It's great that we voted on it, but now, as the old saying is, it's always the devil's in the details. So Mass D E P is involved, Mass D O T is involved. We're working through with the engineers. It's always easy to put something on paper and say, this is what we're going to build. But if anybody's ever done a remodel to a house, it never works that way. Now imagine a $4 million construction project, right? So, so we're working through it. We had a multi-departmental head meeting with the developer and all the engineers yesterday, met for two and a half hours. Overall, it went well. So we'll continue to work through it. The developer had always hoped that he was going to be able to start doing some construction this fall. That probably is not going to occur. It'll probably be more of a springtime is what we would be looking at. And the last is, is that I signed off on the town hall parking lot for the annual boosters car wash. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
With nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.